Hello, welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Town Council of the town of South Kingston. The date is Monday, May 10th, 2010. Can you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dale, can we have the roll call, please?
Council President Fogarty?
Here.
Council Vice President Eddy?
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee?
Here.
Councilman O'Neal?
Here.
Councilwoman Whaley?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from previous meetings from the work session of April 26th. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from the work session, April 26th, 2010.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is from the regular session, April 14th, 15th, and the 26th of 2010.
I move approval of the regular sessions, April 14th, 15th, and 26th, 2010.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. A resolution granting a holiday sales license to Wakefield Prescription Center Incorporated, 580 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. The application is by Jerome Ritner, President, 4100 Post Road Warwick. And this is new. Is anybody here from Wakefield Prescription? Okay. Why don't we continue that? And we'll hold it and see if somebody comes in for later on.
Kathy, excuse me. Is this new because the location has changed?
It will be new because of the location.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just hold this and we'll come back to that and continue at the end if somebody comes in. I'll write that down so I don't forget. Okay. All right. Next is communications. Communication A is a communication dated April 22nd, 2010, from Laura Panza, Director of Program and Training from the Girl Scouts of Rhode Island Incorporated, announcing that Sarah George and Lila Wilde have achieved the Girl Scout's Gold Award and are requesting certificates of recognition for them. Received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. Council, Ella?
Kathy, I just had a question, and I did question some of the Girl Scout leaders in the town. We usually get invited to that bridging ceremony and present an award from the town. I know Polly's been there.
Yeah, I was last year.
So, I'm not sure if we, you know, comply with this, then what happens at the, I think it's in June, the bridging ceremony?
Usually, yeah.
Right. So, I'm not sure. I know this comes from Girl Scout headquarters, but if we give this, then what do we give on that day?
Well, what I would usually say is I was going to see if they might want to come in and we'll give the recognition here. I mean, it can be presented again at the bridging ceremony. That's what you usually do because we get all the Eagle Scouts and I like to try to make it equal with the Girls and the Gold Scouts. So, I have no problem with that at all. I just think that we should see if they can come in here and lead us in the pledge and honor them like we do the Eagle Scouts.
And I know that it has been a question with the Eagle Scouts that if they're presented there, do we give them the same award?
Yeah, I mean, I've gone to the Eagle Scout thing and the same award has been...
We don't have two separate awards.
Yeah, it's the same.
So, we just give them the same thing or we just...
Well, let's see if they want to come here and whoever goes to the bridging ceremony this year can also represent it if they'd like.
That sounds like a plan. Thanks.
Okay. So, is that what we're going to do?
Yeah.
I don't want to make them, you're going to invite them here?
So, we want to invite them to attend.
Yes, and there's a second.
The next.
So, Polly, you're making that motion?
Yes, that's my...
Carol's seconding.
I'll second.
So, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Dale, we'll contact them.
I will.
All right. Next, we move to H is a resolution adopted April 13th, 2010, by the South Kingston School Committee in opposition to mandatory binding arbitration on monetary matters for school teachers and expressing concerns with the educational funding formula proposed by the Rhode Island Department of Education. Received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. Council.
I would ask that we support this resolution.
The first resolution, and then we're going to change the second one.
Change which one?
You can vote on them separately if that makes it easier.
That does make it easier.
Okay.
Don't you think?
Just to make them vote?
We'll vote on the resolution that is in opposition to mandatory binding arbitration that was filed by the school committee on April 13th, 2010.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now, the next part of the communication.
In educational funding?
We were going to...
Okay. We were going to use our, we have our own resolution for that.
We're going to, yeah. You're going to do that, Polly?
You do it, Kingstown.
No, go ahead, Seth.
You're doing fine.
You got it? Okay, the resolution, we support the resolution that the South Kingston Town Council acknowledges the need for a fair and equitable and predictable funding formula. Further, we advocate for the following changes to the funding formula as presented by the Rhode Island Department of Education. Do we need to read through the entire?
As presented.
As presented.
We have to put it as presented, Steve.
I think you can say as presented through the town manager's office.
Okay, as presented through the town manager's office.
Second. The moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please, wait a minute.
Republican Republicans?
Um, yeah, okay.
Thank you. David Caprio. Just in regards to the funding formula, I'd just like to remind the council and those may be watching that we have arranged for Commissioner Gist to be here on the 19th of this month at 7:00 PM to field questions and give further explanation as to her formula. As many of you may also know, the formula was placed into legislation and was submitted last week by Chairman Constantino as generally is as a starting point, as the budget is generally presented as a starting point of legislation. So, it is now officially in the pipeline and we will, they will schedule hearings on that formula, but we have arranged to have Commissioner Gist come here to answer questions not only from yourselves but also from the public regarding the formula.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, so it was moved and seconded. There was a discussion. Any more discussion?
No.
Ella, did you have something?
No.
Oh. Yeah, it was moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next, we move on to J, and this is a communication dated May 4th from Judd Nussman requesting to present additional information relative to the petition previously submitted to the Town Council concerning a moratorium on the granting of special use permits involving wetland and wetland stream setback relief is received and placed on file. And Dale, I think there's something you would reference yet.
Yes, we have a communication dated May 9th, 2010, from Mr. Nussman requesting a continuance of this communication to the May 24th Town Council meeting.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously to continue. Next is comments from interested citizens. If anybody has anything to say, they can, please come forward now. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. David Caprio. I just want to present to the council some updated numbers that came through the May Revenue Estimating and Case Load Conference. It's being reported, not officially by the commission, but by RYPAC, which is present and keeps pretty close tabs. There's actually some good news. The 2010 current year, which all of you know, we're trying to close approximately a $200 to $220 million gap. There's been an increase of approximately $78 million in revenue, which will go a long way in the supplemental budget towards some of the matters that have been presented as potential cuts or potential changes that were substantial in nature. So, that's very good news. And for the 2011 year, where we have approximately $420, $25, $27 million, they've identified an additional $64 and a half or so million of revenue, which again will be, is moving the needle in the right direction anyway. It appears as though the tax revenues are starting to recover somewhat, and I saw that as I was looking through the ProJo blog on the way here. So, just thought I'd deliver the good news. Sometimes bad news travels fast, but in this case, good news traveled fast also.
The needle's not to full, though, yet.
I'm sorry?
The needle's not to full. It's driving the needle, but it's not at full yet.
No, we're still in the reserve tank, but at least we have...
Yeah, okay. We just wanted to make that clear.
We have a little bit further to go. But certainly, that, you know, on a serious note, that does offer an opportunity to review the automobile tax and some of the other aid on a statewide basis. It does give some breathing room on some major issues, and now that will, the Finance Committee will begin to take a second look at all of those issues.
David, did they break down the 78? Was it coming from personal income, sales, gambling? Did they break it down at all?
There was, the one thing that I saw that I jotted down was $36.5 million was sales tax, and I didn't see a further breakdown reported. There may be further updates as the conference continues.
So, that'll be in the papers tomorrow?
It was on the ProJo blog, as I said.
Today?
Driving, just driving down home from work, so.
Dave, did that include data with the flood or is the flood coming in the next revenue conference?
I didn't, I don't know. They met all, it was a nine-hour meeting today of all the tax data and they have to do the caseloads now, but I didn't break that down.
Yeah, might be pre-flood.
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, might be pre-flood. That's why I'm just concerned that the next one will be down again and, you know, it's just that...
I saw some media reports that the flood did have an impact on many things.
Oh, yeah.
Just the mall alone being closed is a significant impact on our sales tax, but...
Right, including this.
Notwithstanding that, it appears as though, like I said, the needle's moving back in the right direction. Hopefully, we can enact some policies which will continue it to move in that direction.
And hopefully, it's not used as a...
Just a little bit of good news on otherwise gloomy economic, I don't know, two or three years.
Hopefully, it's not used as a reason to delay making some decisions.
Well, again, now that's, you know, everybody uses the term "everything's on the table", but with the supplemental budget still not being passed, those figures certainly will be cause to relook at, I'm sure, several options that were, that may not have been available prior to the increased revenue. So, we'll keep you updated.
Thanks, Steve, for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thanks.
Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Bob Trager. As I promised, I'm here again. Don't have a lot to say. I attended the school committee meeting last week, and one of the members of the council was there, and I was glad to see that, taking notes. I started jotting down a few things. Anyway, generally, I feel that I hope there'll be a way not to have to close any of these elementary schools after listening to many parents speak, making a lot of sense, and we've got to find another way. I hope you will find another way to deal with the problem, and if it gets to the point when the numbers of students go down to an unbelievable amount, sometimes a school closing is necessary. But I doubt very much that it's going to do the people in Wakefield that walk their children to school very much good if you ended up closing that school. And I guess no matter which school you close, it will negatively affect students and parents. There's got to be another way to get the money. I'm glad to see Mr. Caprio, David Caprio, attending these meetings on, I guess, pretty much of a regular basis, which I don't think occurred in the past. And I come because I like to see who's going to show up here. And as I walked in today, I look around, regular people that need to be here and very few others. And that tells me that, I guess, the thing's all set with the schools. Everything's hunky-dory. Everything's going to work out great, right? Is that the way it's going to be, folks? Does anybody want, would you comment on that? Do you think it's all going to work out with the schools this year? Anybody?
Do you want to address it, Kathy? Bob, it's a process, Bob. You know, we're still waiting to hear what the state has to say for money, so it's, you know, we're hoping for the best. Nobody here wants to see a school closed, but, you know, we got a state funding formula coming at us.
I realize that, but isn't there another way to deal with that? Couldn't there be another way?
It's a big, big numbers that might be coming our way, Bob.
One teacher...
I wish that we could. I wish that we could. We're trying, we're meeting with...
I know it's just a pie in the sky type of thing, but one teacher spoke up and said that she'd be willing to take some of the burden. She might be one out of a very few, maybe, that would be willing to do that, but that's an avenue. It just needs to be some way to come up with whatever it will take to keep the schools, at least keep the schools open. And I hope you would find out. I'll go to the school committee meeting next time and we'll see what happens, but...
The school committee, I think, has said that they have, trying to have open, you know, talks with the teachers.
You know, the presentation that was given at that meeting was unbelievably professional, but I personally believe, and other, somebody else made the comment, there actually, I believe, a couple of people there. It was great, but that isn't where I want, that isn't where I want the people that are running the schools to be having to think. I want them to think about what is, what are we going to do to make schools better? And this has been going on for years, as long as I was in education too. School committees don't really function as people that are moving education forward. They're not forward-looking, and that's what I would like to see them do, and I'd like to see you guys handle the money. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Carol.
I just wanted to say, Bob, just tonight, we passed a resolution that, from the Town Council here, acknowledging the need for fair, equitable, and predictable funding formula. Certain recommendations were made by the town manager that would increase the amount of money that we've got here in South Kingston through the funding formula, so we are trying to do whatever we can to bring pressure upon the state to be fair, equitable, and, you know, get our fair share here in South Kingston. So, we are on it, I would say.
That's good.
I just wanted you to recognize that.
I don't know if you've met my son, Bob, or not?
Oh, yes.
Well, Bob and I don't see eye to eye on a lot of things, but he's good at the money. He's good at analyzing money things, and being a father and four kids, you need to, you know? And, but, I don't, I realize that that is a legitimate problem. Money is a legitimate problem, but I also know that if you have people forward-thinking about education with the technology we have today, there might be a way to save lots of money in education, lots of money. But somebody, those would be hard decisions too, you know? I watched a program today, yesterday, on education. I had a great panel on one of the C-SPAN stations, and there are people out there thinking about these types of things on how to, if there's a teacher out there that knows how to teach algebra better than anybody in the world, why not have that on, have him on, you know, a screen or a video thing or write into kids' computers and let them learn algebra that way and have the teachers be backup? There's a lot of things that could be done now, and I never thought I'd ever say that because I wasn't ever a computer person, I'm still not, but there's a lot of ways to do things, and all I'm concerned with is, as you've heard me before, is that if we don't do something in this country to get the idea that education is something that needs to be sought after by young people, because we've been riding the wave in this country for many, many years now. The wave is about to crash, as you well know. The whole world's in trouble. So, I just, that's where I'm kind of coming from. One of these days, I'll come prepared, and I'll try to, just to take five minutes when I do.
Kathy? Ella?
Bob, actually, what you're talking about in reference to having that one teacher who teaches well, there is a program that's going to be starting up in September by the Department of Education, and it's a virtual school. And districts throughout, you know, the state of Rhode Island will be able to participate in that and have children be a part of that. I'm actually fortunate enough to have a student who will be a piece of that program next year, so it's pretty exciting.
And we can't do it any too fast either. Times...
Tempest future. Okay. Anybody else, any other comments? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Jonathan Daly LaBelle. I figured I'd talk about something different tonight since it's not budget tonight. I think that, I don't know if you've gotten specific feedback about the online tool, you know, the meetings online, just whether or not people are enjoying that or not.
I've gotten some feedback. People seem to be watching it, and they like it. I actually got a call this morning from someone who said, "I'll watch you." I can't make it to the meeting, but I'll watch it tonight online, so.
That's good.
People are doing it.
I guess the problem is with us. Most folks at home are dialing it right up to 50 because of the audio issue, so somehow or another. Video's excellent, but the audio issue seems to be a continuing, and maybe our fault here, we're not mouth to mouth with these things.
Somebody said that singers, you know, bite the microphone so they can be heard. I don't know, you want to go that far, but. But I guess I'm just wondering how this came about, and I think it is a great improvement. But was this offered to the school committee or did it have to be separate? Because the school committee is still kind of going the low-tech, they're rebroadcasting their, you know, the meetings, I guess, twice, and then that's the end of it.
Jim, Steve?
School committee through the superintendent has been in contact with us, and we have provided information to them on how the program could work. They could share in a similar program to what we have, but they do things in a different way in terms of how they store data or present data. One of the improvements that we have, in addition to having the video available on demand, is the documentation for the meetings is also available so that somebody can read the documentation at the time that they're watching the meeting. A lot of it depends on how the school committee wants to format and present information, but yes, they would be able to share in the same type of program services that we have. We've provided that information to them, and it's certainly up for their review at this point.
Okay, so it wasn't offered at that time when it was started in the town hall?
There wasn't. They weren't included in the bid. No, they weren't.
Okay, so is that going to be an additional cost then, or is that something that...
Oh, it would be an additional cost. It would be an additional cost, certainly, because of the space.
Okay, well, I don't know if it could have been handled differently at that time, but I would say, you know, almost no matter what the cost, it's worthwhile and, you know, so hopefully, the Town Council will encourage the folks that meet over in the high school to do the same, because I would think, you know, again, I'm asking you what kind of feedback you have, but I guess I'll tell you, I enjoy it, even though I make most of the meetings. But I would think that it's a positive contribution to the discussion, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, next, we move on to the Town Managers Report. Mr. Alfred?
Just one item I wanted to reference tonight. In the most recent package on May 6th, I provided the council with a preliminary report that was prepared through the Planning Department on the Mattoonik Coastal Area. This report provides a summary of all of the data available, some of it going back all the way to 1939 as far as the changes in the shoreline and what the implications are as far as public health and safety concerns with potential loss of the structural integrity of Mattoonik Beach Road. Now that the report's been prepared, staff will be meeting with Coastal Resource Staff and hopefully, members of the Coastal Resource Management Council to talk about the various options that are presented in the report, as well as the information that was presented in the report that was prepared on hazard mitigation. The summary recommendation for this report is that the town begin serious plans as far as looking for federal assistance to be able to provide some type of a protective concrete wall or sea wall that would be built in that Mattoonik area that would run just east of the condominium trailer park and run about 1,500 to 1,800 feet. Where the placement of the wall would go and what impact it would have on local businesses, both positive or negative, is something that will need to be discussed and refined. But I think the main concern that the town has to have at this point is that there's over 500 residential structures that are in the Mattoonik area that would be adversely impacted if the integrity of that road were, was lost. We are concerned with the change of the beachfront, particularly in the area of where the two commercial establishments are, and a substantial loss of the landwood shoreline. So, the report is available, in fact, it's online as a part of tonight's meeting. It's information we will be sharing with the, with our senatorial and congressional delegation and meeting with their staff to determine. I think the first step would be, is looking at providing the necessary environmental assessment, basic scoping of how this type of program would work, and also a full review of the availability of federal programs that could assist the town. Forecasted costs are anywhere between $17 to $19 or $20 million, and those are preliminary in nature. But certainly, if we were to lose that road and borrow all transportation access to those 500 residential units, as well as the tourism base that that provides and the commercial enterprises that are there, it would be a serious loss for this community. So, we need to begin that planning at this point, and the report is the first step in that process. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer it on the report or any of the other items that are in either of the two manager reports that have been provided over the past two weeks.
Any questions for Steve about any of this? Jim?
Yes, Steve, many thanks to Ray. Really a great report. Too bad we didn't have some more history of the pre-38 hurricane. That would even be more, I mean, just substantially different. I'm 39 forward, I mean, 38, we must have had homes a mile out in the ocean.
Yeah, I was going to give Barbara Hackey a call. Pardon? Oh, you're going to pay for that one, Steve. She's going to get you. Well, she watches the meeting, so I wanted to give her something to complain about.
Oh, boy.
The, well, they repaired the Harbor of Refuge. Was there any state money? Was that all federal money anyway that could be expanded into this armament area for the Mattoonik Point area?
It's one of the reviews that needs to be done, Jim. I'm not sure that we could afford that type of a public works project or that the feds would look at that as being an appropriate solution, but it is in the hazard mitigation report, the review of that type of a, of an improvement.
Okay. And I asked you at the work session, just for everyone's information, but DEM and Coastal have been very responsive to the need for holding tanks specifically for commercial businesses?
They have been responsive. Holding tanks have been allowed wherever a septic system could not be installed where it was an existing operation. If somebody came in and wanted a holding tank, we have opposed anybody getting a holding tank for new construction, but on existing construction where there is not an ability to do replacement for an ISDS system, DEM has been willing to provide the holding tank option. Again, we're concerned with holding tanks becoming a frequent use because of the impact that it has on the septic disposal requirements at the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Nope. That was a good report. Good presentation a few years ago. When did they last present down in Mattoonik?
I'm sorry?
When was that last presentation down in Mattoonik?
We did the...
That was about two years ago.
Yeah, it was two years ago, yeah.
And that was on the hazard mitigation report. That's just about finished at this point. Hopefully, by the summer, we can have another public session in Mattoonik to talk about where we see plans going, to get public... to talk about where we see plans going, to get public reaction on that. But before I have that type of meeting, I want to deal with the state officials. One, to determine whether DEM is going to be involved. Two, to determine if Coastal is the sole, the sole regulatory agency, and how they're going to interface with the Federal Corps of Engineers. And, because as the report points out, there's two different options available to the town. One is going through a special exception process, and the second would be to have a reclassification as a man-made beach opportunity in Mattoonik. Each of them has its own drawbacks. One, if we don't go through a special exception process, it would most likely mean the loss of the businesses. If we did go through a special exception process, we would be able to locate the seawall, seawood of where high water mark is today. But that means that there would be backfilling and the, and the creation of new high and dry land. And the implications of that are, what value is that and to who, and at what cost? So there's a number of those things that are going to have to be looked at, that balance both the commercial activities and residential activities that are occurring in that area, and what the overall goal of the town, which has to be, is protection of the integrity of the road network. So there's, there's going to be balancing that's going to be necessary in terms of reviewing each of these. I think it's going to be a while before we can really come up with a formal public policy on what method needs to be selected. But I think that the core data is available at this point, it can be reviewed, and we can start answering questions from the public on what haven't we looked at, or what have we looked at.
Okay, all right, thanks, Steve. All right, you're all set, then? And next is Mike, for the solicitor's report.
Yeah, unless there are questions, I'll say that.
Any questions for Mike? Nope. Next, we move on to appointments. Polly?
And we do have some appointments tonight we discussed at the work session. The first is for the Affordable Housing Collaborative. And we are going to appoint John Cole Frigilio to a term of three years. But he will be filling in for, will he, for David Coppola? And so his term will only go until August of this year.
Yep, so he'll go to eight, 10.
Yeah, and then he, okay.
Okay, so there's a motion.
That's the first one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, okay.
And the next is for the planning board. This is a reappointment of Arvel Ken Kennerson. And his term will be for another three years, and that will go to May 2013.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, okay.
Is for the waterfront advisory committee. And that will be Michael Andrew Sherry. And his term, this will be a new term, and he, he will be for three years, ending 2013.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That was it, just there for the, tonight, and on appointments.
Kathy?
Yes?
Please say no, if you don't want this. Could, could I just backtrack and ask Steve a question in reference to number eight?
Sure.
Steve, any petitions that are brought forward for a referendum that are delivered here to the town hall on May 12th with the signatures? Can we just have a clarification if after May 12th, that could be pulled?
I'll let Mike answer the question. I would say from my reading of the charter, once submitted across the desk to the clerk's office, if there's 200 signatures there, I don't see how it could be withdrawn.
I, I don't disagree, because then, the people who signed that petition, they literally would have to come in and withdraw them. So, once, once the clerk certifies that there are 200, we go forward.
All right, I just wanted that clarified, because I had heard some comments in the community that if, you know, petitions are moved forward for a referendum, that they could always be pulled after May 12th. So I just wanted that clarified, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, okay, we'll move on. Next is new business item A and B, we're going to block these together. A is a resolution rescinding an award of bid originally granted on March 22nd to Fleet Construction, Martin Street, Suite 10, Cumberland, Rhode Island, for the Liberty Lane Phase 1 road construction project, as further describing the memorandum from the public service director to the town manager dated April 30th, 2010, entitled Bid Recommendation, Liberty Lane Phase 1 Road Construction Project. And B is a resolution rescinding an award of bid originally granted on March 22nd to Fleet Construction, 22, 24 Martin Street, Suite 10, Cumberland, Rhode Island, for the Old Mountain Field paving project, as further describing the memorandum from the public service director to the town manager dated April 30th, 2010. Do you want to talk about these?
Fleet has gone into receivership at this point. They are not any longer doing actual construction, so the rescinding is necessary. I'd also note that items C, D, and E would be a re-award to the second low bidder that provided a proposal from De Amber Construction. So A and B are necessary to rescind, and then C, D, and E would deal with new authorization.
Do there are motions on A and B?
Some will, Kathy.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion on these? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So next, we will block together items C, D, and E. Resolution authorizing an award of bid to De Amber Construction Company Incorporated, 800 Jefferson Boulevard for Liberty Lane Phase 1 Road Construction Project in an amount not to exceed $360,000, including a contingency, as further describing the memorandum from the public service director to the town manager dated April 30th. Also to De Amber Construction, same address, the Old Mountain Field paving project in the amount not to exceed $43,000, including a contingency, as further describing the memorandum from the service, service, public services director to the town manager, also dated April 30th. And E is also an award of bid to De Amber for Moonstone Beach Road Reconstruction Project in the amount not to exceed $250,000, also in a memorandum from the public service director to the town manager dated, dated April 30th, entitled the bid recommendations.
Just one comment on the item E, the Moonstone Beach Road. That's based on the unit costs that were provided through De Amber. Mattoonik Beach Road, that section of road is going to be between Mattoonik Schoolhouse and Mill Pond for, for Moonstone's repaving. That's the section of road that we had a catastrophic failure of the, the road surface during the winter months with frost heaves. We had to really physically remove the, the road surface itself and put trap rock down. So what we're recommending is that the $250,000 is what the cost of that project would be based on the unit prices submitted by De Amber back in, I believe it was, I think it was in September, when that bid was originally sought.
Do we have to change any of the motions, then? Do you just, you just want?
A pardon?
Do we have to change any of the motions?
No.
No, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Motion to approve new business item C, D, and E?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is Resolution G, a resolution opposing House Bill 2010 H 758, an act relating to labor and labor relations, schoolteacher arbitration that would expand the scope of the binding arbitration process to include monetary issues for teachers and non-teacher educational employees, and requesting our general assembly representative to support our opposition to this bill. Steve, do you want to talk about that?
In September of last year, the council, I believe it was September or October, the, the council provided a resolution of opposition to a similar piece of legislation. Since that would have died with the last legislative session, and the same legislation is being introduced again in this session, we are recommending that the council go on record in opposition to the binding arbitration for, for teacher contracts. It's noted that I believe 38 of the 39 cities and towns signed on last fall in opposition to this bill, and hopefully, the same type of reaction will be provided again.
Any questions for Steve, regarding this?
Thirty-eight of 39, here it comes again.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item C.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We, we're, we're done, so we have to go back here to license item A, and I guess we'll continue that. So nobody's come from Wakefield prescription? No. So a motion to continue that to the next meeting, if somebody wants to move.
So move.
Well, I, do you have to make the motion?
A motion to continue.
License A.
Continue license item A.
Is there a second?
Second.
When?
May 24th.
May 24th, 2010.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And any other motion to adjourn?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Meeting is adjourned at 8:20.